I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, tonight led by Amelia DePoneo, a student from St. Matthew's Lutheran School.
There's a little bit more, right here on the tape. See the tape? We'll help you start whenever you're ready. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll stay right there. Councilman Londo will be right down to talk to you for a minute.
Everyone say hello to Amelia. Amelia is five and a half years old and she's going into kindergarten next year. Excited about that?
Yep.
All right. She's going into kindergarten this fall at St. Matthew's Lutheran School, right here in Westland. She's extremely excited to learn about math, spelling, and to reconnect with some of the friends she learned in preschool, she met in preschool, learned. In her free time, she enjoys playing outside, playing with her Barbie dolls, and she loves to dance. Are you gonna dance for us tonight?
Yep.
Let's see what you got. Awesome job. Usually when you ask somebody to do something, they're like, "No, not tonight, not Amelia." So Amelia, I want to thank you very much for coming in on short notice. I texted your mom this morning to see if you could come tonight. We have a certificate for you, from the mayor's office and from the city council, so we appreciate you coming. I'm gonna have mom and dad come up here for just a second. Do you guys wanna say anything about your beautiful daughter?
She was just very excited to come today. I thought she would be a little hesitant, but right away she's like, "I'll do it." I'm like, "Oh, yeah." So here we are. And thank you for asking us.
Oh, no problem. Appreciate it.
All right, we'll just do a quick picture and I'll let you guys get on with your day.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
President.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Gabbell.
President.
Before we begin this evening, I'd like to take a, and have a moment of silence for the victims of the violence that occurred in Texas and in Ohio this past weekend. First up is Ruth Dale.
I should've been second or third, now I was all sad from all of that. But, anyway. I suppose I look like an advertisement here, Eloise Hospital. I'm here to announce that our Westland Historical Society is having a fundraiser. We're selling t-shirts, and what we have done is to print out manhole cover prints. And right now, we have two. The Eloise Hospital, and the second one is City Westland Water Department. These t-shirts sell for $20 each, and they're on sale at the Historical Park, in the gift shop at the Collins House, and the Historical Park is open Saturdays, 1 to 4. Thank you very much.
Next, Kyle, you have...
Kyle Mulligan, Parks and Recreation Department, just wanted to give the council an update, as well as thanking you guys for giving me the opportunity here as the Parks and Recreation Director. I've learned a lot in just three months, so. The ranger program is what I've been working on mostly here this summer. It's over at Tatten Park. This season, we have about 35 rangers, ranging from ages 14 to 22. They've gotten experience in food preparation, cash handling, park maintenance, as well as operating the splash pad, and assisting with any rentals at the park throughout the season. The first step in my position, when I started here in May, was to help get the parks ready. I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to Erica, Vic, and the entire DPS crew for getting that park ready for the season. I believe the park looks great. Being here since May, I have had the fabulous opportunity of joining the Healthy Westland Coalition, and I just want to let everybody know here tonight that the Second Annual Healthy Westlands Fall Fitness Festival is scheduled for 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Saturday, September 14th, at the Lions Pavilion at Tatten Park, so please be sure to put that on your calendar. I've also joined the Events Committee, where I was assisting with the team with Blues Bruising Barbecues last weekend, which was a huge success. We're now gearing up for the Splash Bash, which is at the end of August, and then as well as our Halloween trick-or-treating event at the end of October. So there's a lot of exciting events coming up. I've also been able to meet with Westland's youth organizations, WIAA, Wayne Westland Soccer League, Norway Boxing Gym, the Dance Academy, and the Tennis Academy. The Tennis Academy is currently using the newly renovated tennis courts over at Stottlemyre Park. They have 25 kids in their camp, and it is a fantastic program. My goal with these organizations is to continue to support them with the marketing, advertising, utility bill inserts, social media posts, anything we can to help increase participation, because they're recreating in Westland, and we want to continue to provide those opportunities for them. One thing that I would love to do with these organizations is to create a Summer Sampler Program, starting in the summer of 2020. This would be a, throughout the summer, in the month of July, have different programs each week, each day, where people can sign up on the City of Westland's website, and then the volunteers would be the organizations that we are currently working with. One other item that I have created is a Shared Revenue Agreement for all incoming programs through the city. This SRA is gonna allow outside programmers the opportunity, if they show proof of insurance, to run their programs at city property. This SRA includes Westland's duty to assist with marketing, advertising, and registering participants through the City of Westland. So now that I've been here for three months, I'm now going to start turning my focus towards the Parks and Recreation Five-Year Master Plan, so that's what I'm gonna be working on over the next few months here. So in conclusion, just a couple of goals I have in my new position is to create that Westland Summer Sampler Program for the summer of 2020. I want to bring a family prom night to Westland City Hall in the spring of next year, and then continue to help increase participation for the programs in our area, as well as generate new programs at City Hall. Art classes, yoga, jazzercise, you name it. So if anybody has any ideas, they're looking for something specific, please let me know. And then one other thing is I would like to revamp the Westland Parks and Recreation website, to include all programs in Westland, whether they're at Jefferson Barnes, City Hall, the Friendship Center, or the library, and have that all easy access on one page. So that's all I have, and I'll just open up to any questions if you guys have any.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. Just wanted to bring an update. Wayne County Federal Aid Committee met on January 27th, and some proposed road projects, repairs, as well as resurfacing, were announced for the next few years. In particular, the ones in Westland include just over a million dollars for resurfacing of North Hicks Road between Ford and Warren. That's scheduled for next year. We also have $2.2 million for the bridge replacement and the rehab on Merriman Road. And I know Jim, Councilman Hart, contacted me about some issues about Merriman Road, and the other part, past and arbitral, is going to be done. There's gonna be considerable work up through there, all the way to Plymouth Road, too, and I think that's gonna be '20 or '21. But it's going to be done, there's actually a stretch of Merriman Road further north that was just completed in the last few days. But anyway, back to what's happening here locally, there's over three-quarters of a million dollars prepared for road repairs, or proposed for road repairs, repairs on Merriman Road near the, near the bridge, north of Warren. So the pavement area there, leading up to the bridge, is going to be done, that's a little over three-quarters of a million dollars. $970,000, almost a million dollars, for resurfacing of Newburg Road from Cherry Hill to Ford Road, and that's proposed for 2020 and 2021. Also, the 2019 and 2020 budget hearing started last week. We had one this morning, another one tomorrow. We have a special meeting on Wednesday, plus the full board on Thursday. But the budget hearing should be wrapped up by the end of this month, and we should be approving the 2020 budget by the first of the month. Coffee hours, just wanted to announce, we have got a change in location. We're gonna be at the library, starting on September 9th, Monday, September 9th, at 9:00 a.m., and set the new location at the library. As everyone knows, the big boy closed down, which necessitated us finding another location, but we were already looking at possibly doing it at the library, so it worked out fine. And I'd invite residents to stop in for a cup of coffee, and, and get updates, and for the discussion that'll take place. Any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak on this. I need to wonder if it'd be okay to approach, I got a couple things I'd like for you to see, the whole council to see.
You can give it to the clerk.
Business Agenda 9.
Okay. If you can give it to the clerk, he'll distribute it to the council.
I'll take it. On the Business Agenda 9, for that Montana building, I'd like to speak to, think that that's a good, good thing for the city, because with the problems that we're having with this opioid thing right now, we need to find a place where people aren't getting turned around, and put in a hospital, and said, "Hey, okay, you're fine, leave," and then end up back on the streets again. That this goes, this can be something that can happen to everybody's family, not just one, it could be at any time, on there, but having a place to where they can say, "Okay, we can go to here," gives these families, these opportunities to say, "Hey, we're trying to make this help for everybody, not sit here, turn you away, and say, 'Okay, just because you did this, now we're leaving you out to dry,'" type of thing. A lot of the pictures and things that I put up there are things that I think this council should take a look at. They're in regards to my daughter that I lost almost two years ago due to the opioid problem, and it had to do with the fact that she was turned away from hospitals every time I tried to get her help, and then come to find out that now, all of a sudden, they're starting to try and get into more about it. But back then, it was like, nobody wanted to help her, at that point. This could be one of your family members, one of your kids, could be a member of the family, or anything, and that, you wouldn't want to take that and say, "Hey, okay, my family member got turned away as well for this thing, why didn't they take and put them in a facility that gives them that amount of time, say 14 days or whatever, to try and help them get straight and back on the right track," on there, instead of putting them out on the street again to say, "This is okay for you guys to do," on there. I think these pictures and the saying on that speaks for itself a lot, on there. I just hope that the decision on that can be put to good use. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone on my right?
Sir, I, just for the record, are you in support or opposition to line item 9?
I'm in support of that.
Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Ray?
I was just listening to that gentleman. It's like mental health, and it's very important, and I think it's good that they have something like that here, because it could be your family, your daughter, your son, and I think it really helps them recover in places like a hospital. Sometimes people do need treatment, and I think I'll support that, and I think it's on 9. Anyway, I also was looking at the 25 miles an hour signs here, for people speeding down the streets of, let me look, it was on here somewhere. I'm so busy looking at the, here, 25 miles an hour, number 15. Oh yeah, traffic controls. Okay, I do support Westland Police Department usually, I always do, but I just, you know, just have a question, the 25 miles an hour signs are gonna be put up on these two streets, and also, no trucks down Central Parkway, it looks like, like there's trucks driving down there? Just curious, thanks.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, Ms. McKinney.
On O that Ray was just talking about, isn't it, when it's 25 mi, 25 miles per hour, if it's not posted, you're supposed to go 25 or less, right? Okay, so technically, they shouldn't need these signs, but people don't know the laws. That's all I want to say on that.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? We'll close Citizens Comment and move on to the Consent Calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion? There was more of a comment than a question, I believe, on the, the, Chief, did you want to take the...
Yeah, thank you, Council President, through the chair, to Ray and Judy. Yeah, there was requests in regards to the speed limit signs being placed on Tom Brown and Pickering Place. There currently are not speed limit signs there. The roadway is kind of a long stretch, there's been a number of complaints from the residents there that people are just basically speeding in excessive speeds down there, so we're putting these stop signs up to make sure everyone knows in that area. The second question was about the trucks. We found that when you're going, when you're traveling by the library, and you're going up Central City, we're having a large number of semi-trucks that I believe are just shortcutting their way to some of the industrial areas, and there's no, there's no deliveries in large businesses or anything on that Central City stretch between Ford and Warren, so we're putting the signs up there to deter the trucks from going through our, kind of our walking area right there, and have them stay on the main roadways.
Thanks, Chief. Is there any discussion from the council? Councilman Hersberg?
Thanks, Council President. Through the chair to the administrative team, I just have a couple of questions. Item D E F I, there are purchases of vehicles for a couple of different departments here. It says they're replacement vehicles, so my question is, what's gonna be done with the current vehicles? Are we gonna sell them? Are they gonna be cut for extra? If you could just go through those.
So they're all gonna be replacement vehicles, so some of them have been pulled out of the fleet already due to the cost of repair?
Due to the cost of repair, some of them have already been pulled out of the fleet, so those, we're, we're going to dispose of them through our, through our policies and procedures, as far as trying to sell them for what they're worth. Some of them are worth not much, but some of them we can get a little bit.
There any other questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following Consent Calendar items. Approval of bid for self-contained breathing apparatus. Administration recommended Apollo Fire Equipment Company. Amount not to exceed $326,850.50. Approval of purchase of diagnostic scan and module for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from Matco Tools. Total amount not to exceed $9,070.40. Approval of purchase of a 308 RQ excavator for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from Michigan CAT. Total amount not to exceed $119,989. Approval of purchase of two Ford F-250s for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from Gorno Ford. Amount not to exceed $61,338. Approval of purchase of one 2019 Ford Ranger for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from Gorno Ford. Amount not to exceed $25,150. Approval of purchase of four post-mobile hoist replacement for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from equipment distributors of Shelby Township. Total amount not to exceed $34,525.21. Approval of the furnishing and installation of two plow packages for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended furnishing and installation from Versalift Midwest. Total amount not to exceed $12,818. Approval of purchase of electric scissor lift for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from Michigan CAT MacAllister. Total amount not to exceed $21,066. Approval of purchase of one 2019 Ford Transit van for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from Gorno Ford. Amount not to exceed $26,451. Approval of purchase of Skid steer loader for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommended purchase from Michigan CAT. Total amount not to exceed $50,789.76. Approval of purchase of email filtering software for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Administration recommended approval of proposal provided by CDW Government. Total amount not to exceed $5,300. Approval of Trend Micro antivirus upgrade and subscription renewal for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Administration recommended approval of proposal provided by CDW Government. Total amount not to exceed $6,075. Approval of Help Desk and Management System subscription renewal for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Administration recommended approval of proposal provided by the sole source, Zoho Corporation. Total amount not to exceed $7,080. Approval of service agreement extension with SVT for audiovisual system services for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Service agreement is for a one-year period. Total amount not to exceed $16,755. Traffic Control Order 2019-04. Install one 25 mile-per-hour speed limit sign at each of these locations. On McKinney Drive, near 36572. On Tom Brown Drive, near 8100. On Pickering Place, near 8182. Traffic Control Order 2019-05. Install one "No Trucks Allowed Except For Deliveries" sign at each of these locations on Central City Parkway. At Ford Road for northbound Central City Parkway traffic. At Warren Road for southbound Central City Parkway traffic. And at Hunter Street for westbound Central City Parkway traffic. Introduction of Ordinance 101-G92. An ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Article 7, Division 2, Section 62-366 through 62-351 of the Westland Code to regulate controlled substances. Adoption of Ordinance 248-A91. An ordinance to amend Article 15, Section 110-15.3.5 of the Westland Zoning Ordinance entitled "General Limitations Regarding Temporary Political Signs." Adoption of Prepared Resolution Recognizing Reclaim as a Local Nonprofit Organization Operating in the City of Westland in Order to Obtain a Charitable Gaming License from the State of Michigan. Approval to Hold the Friendship Center Oktoberfest Event on September 13, 2019, on City, Central City Park grounds, and to adopt a Prepared Resolution allowing the city to apply for a one-day special liquor license from the state of Michigan in order to serve beer at the event. The final item on the Consent Calendar as adopted, adoption of Prepared Resolution Designating Dorsey Road as Rosie Riveter Way. Moving to new business. Item 1. Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting Held July 15, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gabbell.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 2. Approval of Minutes of Study Session Held July 17, 2019.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Support by Councilman Londo? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Of staying due to absence.
Councilman Hammond.
Staying due to absence.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gabbell.
Yes.
Approval of minutes of study session held July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Name.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gabbell.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item four. Request to go into closed study session immediately to discuss pending litigation, Giroux versus City of Westland. Support.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gabbell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council will go into recess for closed session. Councilman Hersberg. Motion by Councilman Hersberg, support by Councilman Hart. Johnson, I'm sorry. Long day. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries.
New business, item six. Approval of attorney's recommendation regarding pending litigation, Giroux versus City of Westland.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item seven. Approval of site plan for proposed expansion of existing gas station, three zero four three five Cherry Hill. South side of Cherry Hill, west of Henry Ruff. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations. This is planning department number one nine eight two B.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, members of the city council. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Cherry Hill Road and Henry Ruff in a zone CB four vehicle service district. It's about sixteen thousand square feet in area adjacent to Garden City and Inks around the border there. Today, the petitioner is requesting site plan approval for a proposed expansion of the existing convenience store and service station. The existing building is about one thousand five hundred square feet. The proposed expansion is about one thousand four hundred square feet. This brings the total building footprint to three thousand forty-five square feet. Curb cuts and pump islands will remain as is without any modifications being proposed. As part of this proposed building addition, the entire building will be refaced using cultured stone and limestone for the bottom half and epus for the top half, as shown on the screen. The masonry, masonry, concrete screening wall, landscaping, lighting, and drainage all comply with the previously approved site plan, and there are no modifications being proposed. However, some of it will be upgraded during the modification, during the construction. The following variances required for this project were granted by the zoning board at its July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen meeting. Parking requirement is sixteen. They could only provide eleven, so a five-space parking deficiency was approved. West yard setback was proposed at zero, the required was thirty. Rear yard setback was proposed at zero, required was, is thirty. And the dumpster location is prohibited in the front yard. There was a couple configurations the architect and I were playing around with. We ultimately decided to locate it adjacent near the building as opposed to near the sidewalk visible from the intersection there. The administration and planning commission, who held a public hearing, are recommending approval of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, petitioner present.
Good evening. My name is Nestor Ashkar from NC Designers and Contracting. I'm representing Mr. Ashkar, owner of the gas station.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
More said enough. If there is any question, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Right. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Council, Councilman Londo, sorry.
Oh, thank you, Council President. I just want to say I appreciate the reinvestment of that property. I live nearby there and it's going to look great, so thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck, thanks.
New business, item eight. Approval to extend site plan approval for proposed commercial building, north side of Warren, west of Merriman. Planning Commission recommends approval to extend the previously approved site plan by one year expiring on September four, two thousand twenty.
Councilman Hart, are you going to remove this from the?
Oh, yeah, a motion to remove item eight from the agenda.
Motion to remove the item from the agenda with support. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. Yeah, I've just had a few concerns. Looks like we have support to take it off the agenda today. My concerns were that the public, or the parking lot was going to be considered public and in Heinz Park, so this was going to be a lease. And my concern, the sheriff's department handles the policing, if you will, of Heinz Park, and all the access to all the parking lots are on Heinz. So this one would have been on Warren Road. I'm also not in support of developing the county parkland whatsoever. Thank you.
Councilman Londo.
My only question was going to be, I see that there's an extension on here. Is this going to, with our votes in it, would this take it off completely and it'd just be?
It'll come back at another, potentially at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Green. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item nine. Approval of special land use for proposed state licensed residential opioid recovery facility, three four two nine zero Ford Road, north of Ford Road, east side of Wildwood. Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed special land use and site plan modification for the proposed residential opioid recovery facility. This is planning department number one two zero two A.
Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support? Support by Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. The subject property here is located on the northeast corner of Ford and Wildwood. It is the site of the former Montana Steakhouse, located on the northerly portion of the land developed by the Coliseum and, and Racket Club, Forum Health Club, rather, sorry. The property is zone CB two shopping center commercial district. And today, the petitioner is proposing to renovate and occupy the vacant building with a state licensed residential opioid recovery facility. Just some background on this, on this parcel. It was, again, previously part of the entire complex here, associated under common ownership. However, the property fell into foreclosure and, and was parceled off from those two parcels with the health club on it. Therefore, it lost its common access off of Ford Road and Wildwood here. And, and I explain that because the petitioner is proposing to construct a dedicated curb cut, as shown on your site plan in this location here, to access the site. The parcel is developed in accordance with a previously approved site plan for Montana Steakhouse that authorized the cross-access agreement, in theory, because it was under common ownership. Circulation aisles and proposed parking are adequate to service the medical facility. The, the required parking is twenty-six and thirty-one are proposed. There is an outdoor seating area for patients and staff alike that is being proposed. It's not a requirement under the state licensing regulations, but was a suggestion made to be able to enjoy the outdoor atmosphere during the daytime. The treatment facility will be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to provide a comprehensive full-service treatment program. As a low-traffic generating medical use, the facility's operation will be of minimal impact on the roadway, traffic patterns in general in the surrounding area. The proposed use will look and operate similar to a medical office building or more so like a medical office building, but perhaps maybe a multifamily apartment dwelling as well. There will be, again, minimal traffic in and out of the facility. Patients will be driven to the facility by someone and picked up by someone. Obviously, staff will drive themselves to and from the facility. Signage will be minimal, located only on the fire chamber in this, shown on this rendering over here, facing Wildwood. This is the sign that's being proposed. The site complies with landscaping that was previously approved in the previously mentioned site plan. The petitioner is proposing to do entire site maintenance, including the removal and replacement of any landscaping in poor condition, along with improving the parking lot condition, striping the lot, bringing any lighting that's, that's not up to date or, or working. That's all I have. I know the petitioner is here with his consultant as well to describe the use in more detail. The administration is recommending approval. The planning commission held a public hearing. We did not hear from the public. No one was here objecting against it, so they are also recommending approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the petitioner like to come forward?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Keneffer, I'm the petitioner. Any questions for me?
Councilwoman Green.
Yes, thank you. The rendering for the renovation appears that the area that is designated for the outdoor enjoyment area for patients and, and staff alike is surrounded by, it looks like some sort of bushes or trees. My concern is relative to this, which I think is a great idea to have outdoor space, especially in the warm months, but this facility is located close to our building that, it's the hockey rink, where the, the kids, they box there. It's in very close proximity, also the gym, that shares a bit of the, the parking lot space. So I would ask that that area be enclosed with like the white decorative fencing that sometimes is wood, but there is a different, um, sort of product that it looks like the really nicer wood, but it's, it may be even some sort of hard plastic. But because there may be kids close to that area, and I believe the planning director stated that patients will be dropped off and picked up. I just, just thinking forward in terms of people being in that area, and again, I, I think it's an awesome idea, but with it being so close to the hockey rink where children may be getting dropped off and picked up. We have a lot of kids who box there, once again. And then the gym, they're swimming there and in aerobics for all ages. So I would ask that there's consideration to enclose that with the nice decorative fencing so that it provides privacy for the patients as well, but also a, a peace of mind for maybe some of the parents that may be in that area. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Council President. As I look at the diagram through the chair, it looks like there is some decorative fence on there. Is that correct?
So I apologize in not going into detail about the outdoor area. There is a fence, decorative fence, that was proposed initially eight feet tall. However, the planning commission felt that was too high. They asked for a two-foot reduction in the fence to six feet high. The applicant granted their wish, and with these sealed drawings that I just received, they are six, it is six foot tall. It's like a black galvanized decorative fence. No problem.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks. I received several calls about this from the neighborhood. I personally don't think it fits as it is a special land use. You know, I think we all feel for the people who are struggling, but when they're allowed to check themselves out at any time and there's a school playground nearby, I have some serious concerns, so I will not be in support.
Can I, can I have Dr. Barthwell come up and explain, answer just to that issue?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Andrea Barthwell. I've practiced in the area of addiction medicine since the early nineteen eighties. Former president of the American Society of Addiction Medicine, developer of a variety of programs across the country for the special purpose, and served in the Bush White House as the deputy director for demand reduction, responsible for prevention, treatment, and education in the area of demand reduction or treatment. I have extensive experience in developing these facilities and running these facilities, and ran the largest adolescent treatment system for the state of Illinois, in addition to adult treatment. We're proposing adult treatment. And the way in which these programs are generally handled is that an individual who is admitted into a residential setting for treatment agrees to sign a cooling-off note saying that if they decide that they are going to leave against medical advice, they will agree to meet with clinical staff and not act on that desire for a twenty-four-hour period. Generally, over ninety percent of patients who sign a twenty-four-hour cooling-off period agree to stay in the facility, have meetings with the clinical staff, and then agree not to leave. There are some people who will leave abruptly, but the facilities have evolved in the way in which they handle that. We don't let people walk away from treatment. We actually feel that we have an obligation to put them in a car and take them to a safe location that is agreed upon, upon contracting to come in. So really, the only people who elope from treatment at this point are those who would leave out the bathroom window with no notice. And in a well-run facility, the incidence of that is extremely low, because when people are preparing to leave against medical advice, it's clear in the treatment milieu that that's going on, and the clinical interventions take place before the person runs out through the bathroom window. Additionally, we, if you drive the distance between here and the school and the other ice hockey rink, there is a, a, a few blocks. And when an individual elopes against medical advice, we're always in these facilities working very closely with law enforcement. We want to be there and available for law enforcement who have people who present themselves as needing help so that we'll be able to respond to people who show up at the police station wanting help. And we also work very closely with the police in the neighborhoods to let them know when we have someone who is, who's left against medical advice. There is no confidentiality that would preclude us from notifying the local authorities if someone leaves without proper escort to a safe site. And that's been an extremely important development, because all of you know that when someone has been withdrawn from opioids, they have receptors that are extremely responsive to the next dose, and the risk of an overdose is extremely high if someone leaves treatment against medical advice without a safe plan for where they're going to be in the twenty-four hours after leaving. And all of this is written up in our plans to the state. It's approved by the joint commission, and it's standard operating procedures across the country at this place, at this point.
Councilman Hart.
Yes, through the chair, Dr. Barthwell. Did I get the name right? I apologize. Barthwell, Dr. Barthwell?
Barthwell, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to be running this facility?
I am developing all the policies and protocols. I'm going to be assisting them with the hiring of the staff, and I'm going to stay in a consultation role until the facility has been trained to do things according to the standards that we've written.
All right, so then, Dr. Keneffer was going to be running the facility after you set up all of your training and standards. And doctor, what is, was your area of expertise, medical expertise?
Addiction medicine, so I'm praying, I'm training.
Doctor.
Oh, Dr. Keneffer.
Doctor Keneffer.
I'm a chiropractic physician.
I see.
Actually, the person that's going to be running the, the facility is going to be, it's going to have its own clinical director and a medical director. It's not going to be me personally, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Londa.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing us forward. We have all, I think, done some extensive research on this, this line item, and I want to first thank the gentleman that came up and spoke, and thank you for your passion on that. I did receive one email of non-support, but I've, like I said, I've done a lot of research on it. I've sat down with our planning director on a few occasions. Obviously, we want to ask about security measures. What are the security measures you're going to have in place as far as it's a locked facility? Are you going to have a camera system? I know you have, they have to be picked up or dropped off. They can't just walk out. So what are the security measures you'll have in place?
So this is not a locked psychiatric facility, so people can come and go, meaning that the doors will not have a bar that you have to wait 15 seconds before an alarm releases it. So it is an unlocked facility, and patients will be here only under voluntary sign-in or admission. But because this is a detoxification residential facility that has both detoxification and live-in patients, it will have 24-hour awake staff. And there are nurses around the clock on both the detox and the residential unit. There are case managers around the clock on the detox and the residential unit, and there are clinical staff who are on every shift. Additionally, we'll have cameras around the facility. One of the things that most people don't take into consideration is that our biggest risk is not people leaving against medical advice, but people wanting to come into the facility to see their loved ones who've gone into treatment, or someone in treatment calling someone to come to see them. So we will have security systems around the clock to make sure that no one comes up to the facility. In addition, you cannot enter the facility without going through a screening and being signed in, and no patient is admitted without a full search, not body cavity search, but a search of their person and all their belongings before they come into the facility.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes, thank you for sharing that information. A facility such as that is, it's, it's one of those things that there may be a little apprehension about establishing a facility like that in our community, but we all know opioid addiction is a national issue. It's, it's definitely an issue here in Westland. We are not without statistical information to validate that we have an opioid crisis in our city as well. So I, I actually, I think it's a, it's a good addition, especially to have something centrally here located for those who may be in need. I did, I had a chance to enlarge the diagram that was shared, and it does say that the planning commission, or planning committee, I'm sorry, is recommending a six-foot wrought iron fence, which is, it's almost similar to jail bars, to me. It's, it's not, it's not attractive. It is open space, so there's no privacy. If there is a discussion that you may not want a passerby to hear, or somebody walking through the parking lot, I don't think that that is the area to have an open enclosure, or why we would move from a decorative enclosure that is a lot more appealing to the eye, to a black wrought iron fence at a six-foot level when we're positioned right next door, to a family building with children that is, is actually utilized more so by youth. So I am not in favor of that, that style of fence. I am all set to vote in favor of that, but I am not in agreement with the planning commission's recommendation. In my opinion, it should be enclosed due to the nature of the business. It also should be attractive and appealing. I think a fence that is similar to bars that you find when you are in jail is not the type of environment that they should be in if they're going there for treatment, especially not black bars, which are similar, could be similar to, you know, actually being locked up. So I would like to see a, a style of fence that is, again, the white wooden-style fence with the, the hard plastic or whatever type it is that is very pleasant to the eye to those who will be in that space. It also will provide privacy and barriers, sound barriers, and also it reduces the possibility of embarrassment for those who may not want everybody to know that they are at that facility. So I'm not in agreement with that fence. I'd like to see it changed, and if there is some consideration to that, I'm all set to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
We don't have a problem changing that, Councilwoman. We're good with it.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. My lack of support for this is not about the facility and what you guys are doing. It's about the location. This is a special land use. This is in a neighborhood. This is by a city park. It's by a school playground. It's by our ice arena. It's by a gym. It doesn't fit. I would definitely support this facility anywhere else in the city, just not on Wildwood. Thanks.
Councilman Londa.
Thanks, President Gob. I want to thank Councilwoman Green for bringing up the statistics. Our police chief actually sent us, probably back in March, some opioid death, provisional drug overdose deaths in Wayne County. Fifty, that was the number of people that died in the city of Westland in 2018. Fifty people died in Westland. Nine hundred and, nine hundred and fifteen died in Wayne County. If you look just in our general area, Westland, Wayne, Garden City, and Inkster, 102 people died. That's not okay with me. I'm sure it's not okay with anybody else up here, so I'm definitely voting in favor of this.
Mayor? Is there any, is there anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Hart first.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President, excuse me. Yeah, this has probably been one of the most difficult things I've had to have in front of me, be given my desire to always to develop that Montanas property, and then this opportunity that came in. I don't disagree with my colleagues at all. It's an epidemic. But the issue here in front of me is not whether we should build an opioid facility. The question before me is, should I put one here? That's the question that's in front of me, and that's where I have an issue. I support these type of treatment facilities. I believe they're necessary. I look at you, and I've lost family members to it, so it touches me. But being very objective through this is one of the most difficult things you have to do. I look at its proximity to the school, which my children have gone to. I look at the proximity to the ice arena, J.C. Park, and I've kind of taken some feedback from some, some residents in the neighborhood. And I tell you what, I've, I've been pro and con, and I've had to do the Benjamin Franklin clothes to really walk myself all the way through this decision process. And it really took me at the end, and I said, I need it, we want it, and man, do I want that Montanas to get fixed up. But man, I don't think this is the right spot for it. I'm concerned about, this isn't a prison. People can leave when they want. They can leave anytime they want, and I'm concerned about them getting out, getting into the neighborhood, and, and not having the care they need, and then the children finding somebody on their way to school that they didn't want to find because they got a hold of something they didn't need to get a hold of because they're in that situation. I'm worried about the park. I'm worried about Mike Badano Ice Arena. And my heart goes out to everybody that's really suffering from this. Again, I've been touched by it as well. But, and this has been the most difficult decision I've had to make, honestly, in terms of yes or no, where do I stand? And I can't support it. It's just, it's not right here. Let's talk about another spot. Let's look at another opportunity. Let's look at some other real estate around the area, but just, just not in my neighborhood, next to my parks and next to my school. And that, that's really the feedback I've gotten. That's where I'm going to stand on the issue. But thank you for bringing this out to me, and I'm resolute I've made my decision.
May I respond?
Sure.
I've been citing these facilities since the mid-1980s, and every community in which I've been able to cite a facility has had an improvement in its standing as a result of these people being in these treatment programs. You want them inside the walls of a treatment program. You don't want them walking around in the neighborhood and not being treated. They're always very good neighbors, the people who are in these facilities. These are people who have made a decision to turn their will over to the care of God and others in order to recover. And people who are in active addiction are associated with a lot of problems in the community. People who are in the active process of recovery are about improving the community, improving people themselves, improving everything around themselves. They're very good neighbors in terms of, you know, helping keep things clean around their facilities, you know, lending a helping hand to others around them. I've never seen the property values go down when one of these things has been cited. It has always gone up when one of these things have been cited, because the people in that community who need help are able to get it. And they are extremely tightly managed in treatment. A well-run treatment facility is helping people leave behind the behaviors that were associated with their addiction and adopt behaviors that are associated with good health. So I've, I've never seen a community not benefit in, in innumerable ways from being able to cite one of these programs.
Councilman Londa.
Thanks. This is why we have seven of us, so we can agree and agree to disagree. Again, I did a little bit more research. We do have some of these facilities located nearby, located near parks, located near churches, located near downtown. Downtown Plymouth has one right on Main Street. A hop, skip, and a jump away from Kellogg Park, a hop, skip, and a jump away from a school. So there are other locations nearby. I didn't get a chance to ask if they've had any issues or any problems, but there are locations that are located in downtown areas and near other parks and amenities, so.
And I will, will assert to you that most communities have more liquor stores and pot dispensaries than they do treatment facilities very close to our churches and our schools. And our, our law enforcement colleagues will tell you that it's not illegal to be in treatment near a school. It's illegal to engage in a drug deal within a certain distance from a schoolyard. So we have to think about how do we provide the resources for people who will continue to be engaged in these activities and who will die ultimately if we don't provide them the resources that they need to recover.
I agree. And the building looks great. It's going to be a huge addition or better-looking place than, than we've had for the last 10 or so years. Would I like to see a steakhouse there again, of course? I love the Montanas. I'd like to see something else there, for sure. But I think, you know, other than the publicity, no one's going to even know what this place is. You know, it doesn't have a logo on it, it doesn't say Drug Treatment Facility. It just says, what is it, AIM or something on there? So I don't think anyone's going to know what that place is after you're up and running. So again, I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes, I, I make a motion to revise the recommendation of this approval from the planning committee, that if this measure is approved, that the requirement for them to install a six-foot black wrought iron fence be omitted and changed to, was your original recommendation an eight-foot white enclosed fence?
No, it was always wrought iron. No, it was always a wrought iron fence.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't have a problem going with a six-foot vinyl fence, wood fence, completely enclosed.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see something that is appealing to the eye of the people in there, and also those who are passing by, and, and to provide as minimal amount of conversate, discussion, travel, sound travel to those who are in that facility, and also maximize their privacy. So I would like to revise this recommenda, I make a motion to revise the planning committee's approval for a six fence, or six, excuse me, six-foot white vinyl fence, or wood vinyl fence for this facility.
There's a motion to.
Amend.
amend the proposal to include a six-foot privacy fence from Councilwoman Green, supported by Councilman Johnson. Is there discussion on that motion to amend? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, that motion carries so that the facility, if approved, would have to have a six-foot privacy fence for the, the courtyard area. Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks. Yeah, I think we're just losing direction here in the conversation. It's not about the management, it's not about the business, it's not about what you guys do. It's being brought forward as a special land use because it doesn't fit what it's sewn for. And with that, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
There's a motion, you're making, there's a motion on the floor to approve. Previously, you have to, you can't make another motion to deny, so you can vote no, or the motion can be voted down, but the, the initial motion remains in place. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President, and, and City Council. I appreciate your, your deliberation on this, and I respect, at least it appears that the majority of the city council members are in favor of this, and I applaud them for that, and I also, I, I respect the council members for, for stating their position on place, and, and that's why we have special land use, because there's always going to be a little bit of disagreement on that. I can tell you that I think this is something that is needed in our community. This is, this is going to fill a gap. It was mentioned earlier that, that the statistics show that Westland has opioid issues, just like everybody else. When you really drill into those statistics, it's actually quite sobering, because what they actually say is that outside of the city of Detroit, Westland has the most opioid issues in Wayne County. Now, that doesn't mean that the city's a bad city, or that the people that live here are bad people, because this is a disease, or that this is, this is a, this is something that's affecting every city across the country, across all socioeconomic lines. So it affects lower class, middle class, upper class, white collar. So Westland has been a leader in this, and at our last meeting, we had our city attorney, we had our attorney that's representing the city in a national mass action lawsuit going against the distributors for opioids to try to reclaim some of the city's lost. We spent a lot of money dealing with this issue, and I think that the city made the right choice to, to go after those folks to reclaim our money, but at the end of the day, that's just money, that's not talking about people. Our, our police chief led us in a Western Wayne County collaboration with, with Westland and other communities, with St. Mary's Hospital and Growth Works to create beds at St. Mary's Hospital, so our EMS folks can, can take folks that are suffering from, from an overdose into the hospital, and they've cleared up those beds, and we've partnered with a nonprofit to, to provide peer mentoring for those folks when they leave. But that's a pilot project. I think what we have here tonight is a chance to kind of fit that exact gap that's missing in Westland, and one of our Westland residents, Mr. Foster, got up here tonight, and he talked about his daughter, and he showed some, some graphic pictures, and that was extremely personal, and I know you were nervous there, so I appreciate you doing that. But one of the things that I remember when he came to the city, he said that, you know, your EMS does an incredible job. They, they picked up my daughter on more than one occasion. They've taken her to the hospital. The hospital's done an incredible job of bringing her back, and then they let her go. She's over 18 years old, so as soon as she feels better, she can check herself out. He said if there was a place in Westland that she could go to to get treatment, or if there was a place that the hospital could send her to, maybe there'd be a different outcome. So we're, we're doing what we can to, to recover the city's cost to, to treat this on a nightly basis. I think we're doing a great thing by partnering up with the hospitals, and I think this is that missing piece, and I think that it's something that's important, and I, I fully appreciate you choosing Westland. And I can tell you that while a lot of communities don't talk about this because they don't want the issue to be out there, they're all clamoring for facilities like yours to come to their cities. I mean, this is the private sector stepping up. You know, we're doing what we can at the government level, so I appreciate it. That building, we all have a lot of memories about that building. While it still looks like a restaurant from the outside, when you go to the inside, it hasn't looked like a restaurant in a long time, because all of that stuff is sold off and the building's in disrepair. So I appreciate the investment that you're making there, and, Council, I appreciate your consideration on this, and there's probably going to be more of these coming to the city, and hopefully they'll be as well-organized and well-respected and with the investment that you're going to make. So we are, the administration's in full support of this project.
Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? I'll just add my comments on it. Pardon? I'll just add my comments on it. It is a tough decision. It's a special land use. We also have to remember that this is a, in a commercially zoned area. It's surrounded on two sides by a cemetery, which was why they wanted to put landscaping around the block when they originally had the wrought iron fencing instead of a privacy fence, but, you know, they've agreed to, to do the privacy fence. I also had a chance to talk with a couple of residents that live across the. I also had a chance to talk with a couple of residents that live across the, or kitty corner from it and who were out on a very nice day, sitting outside, enjoying the, the weather. And they had, they had, of course, heard about the facility and they had also seen some of the, the things, the misinformation that was being distributed on social media about it. And so I encouraged them to, to watch what was stated at the Planning Commission meeting and explain to them a little bit about what happened at the Planning Commission meeting and the discussion that took place. Once it was explained to them that it was a inpatient treatment facility and not a facility that was a halfway house or a, a state licensed facility that, quite frankly, we don't have any control over in a lot of cases that are in neighborhoods all throughout this city. This is, again, it's on Ford Road, it's got a Ford Road address, it's in a commercial area, and there is a definite need, not only in Westland, but throughout most communities for these types of treatment facilities. And once I explained that process to them, they were in, they were in support of it as well. So, and these are people that live kitty corner from the, from the proposed facility. So with that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Green.
No, I already had the...
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, item 10. Approval of proposed land division 35500 through 35560, Central City Parkway, north side of Central City Parkway between Nankin Boulevard and Wayne Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed land division, Planning Department Number 1896B.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Londo. Mo.
Thank you, Council President. The subject site here is located between Nankin Boulevard and Wayne Road. The site contains a vacant one-story building that housed the former Dick's Sporting Goods. It's about 85,000 square feet in area and is zone CB2, our shopping center, commercial business district. Today, the petitioner proposes to split the property in order to allow for the reuse of the existing building. The split will create two separate parcels, one for the US, or rather, yeah, US ICE, a manufacturing ICE use, and one for TINA processing use. It's a, it's a food that goes into hummus. The existing building will be divided as a result of this lot split, as shown on your screen, to accommodate the two separate facilities and the two separate uses that will be under different ownership. Therefore, the two uses will also share a common wall that will separate the two. The following variances were granted by the zoning board at its March 20th, 2019 meeting in order to prepare for this lot split request and the occupancy of these two uses. A variance to allow food and ICE manufacturing in a commercial district, a variance to allow lot sizes less than the minimum required in the CB2 district, and a variance to allow a side yard setback of zero because the two buildings will share the two property lines. There will essentially be no setback from the two new buildings. I'm having trouble connecting. Give me one second. Let's back up for you guys. There you go. Sorry, the Administration and Planning Commission, who held a public hearing, are both recommending approval of this petition.
Thank you. Petitioner, would you like to come forward?
Good evening.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope. Explains it pretty well and hopefully make it a, a new home.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Nice to see you guys again. I met you briefly when we had a study session. It's been quite a few months. At that study session, you mentioned that you would give preferable to Westlanders in the hiring process. Do you still plan on doing that?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Would you be able to share with council when you're going to start taking applications so that we could share it out in the community?
You know what? I'll tell you, my location right now, where I'm at on Eight Mile in Detroit, I think we hired, from what they tell us, everybody in that whole neighborhood, one point or another, we've been there since 1992. So when we move over here, I mean, we prefer hiring people from the neighborhood, from the area all the time. We're trying, we're working on the process of getting, getting everything taken care of, and I'm hoping if everything goes well, trying to evict the guy who's in there, he's not, he's not leaving the building. And that's, that's the problem, is we have a court hearing on Wednesday. But I want to be operating out of there by April 1st. I mean, running the business...
Are you closing down your former? You said you're moving.
No, 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 no.
Okay, this is an addition.
This is additional. That location has exceeded its expectation and they, you know, it can only handle so much. And that's why we buy this facility. The other place is about 25,000 square feet, it's going to be 60, 60,000 square feet. Actually, it's going to be our new main headquarters is over here, at this location. That's going to be a secondary location. And that's going to supply, making ICE. We just contracted the airport. That's one of the reasons we wanted to go to Ryan Millers until the city mayor came to us and says, let's find a location in Westland. And that's why we found this location over here and all that. Because we do supply the ice at the airport, and we supply ice almost 4,000 locations around the southeast Michigan and all that. But yeah, I'm, I'm pushing it, we're ordering all the equipment, we're doing all the plans and everything else, and hopefully we should be presenting the new plans with the, you know, the, the, changing the inside of the facility and everything else in the next month or so.
Do you have a specific website or email that people would go to if they're interested?
Yep, USICEcorp.com, and then that's our website. They can go in there, they should see exactly what we do. We do ice carvings also, that's, we specialize in a lot of carvings and everything. We sell blocks of ice, we sell dry ice, we sell anything that has to do with ice. We've been doing this since 1984, we started the business.
Councilman Londo.
Thanks, President Godbout. Nice to see you guys again for coming forward. Appreciate the investment in the city. I didn't catch that. Are you doing retail sales out of there too, of the ice?
Yes, we are.
Bags of ice and everything?
Yeah. I mean, it's usually minimum, it's not that much, except maybe on Saturday where everybody wants to go. We sell in bulk. We don't sell in retail. When we first started in that location, everybody sold seven-pound bags. Twenty-two pound bags started growing in the last five years. But we only sell bulk ice, 22 pounds. We don't sell anything, you know, like restaurants want to come in or people want to come and have a big festival or big nicks, they want to buy 10 bags or 15 bags at a time. That's what we usually sell most of the time. But we do, we do retail, yes.
Okay. What about the other gentleman, your facility, or just be a processing plant?
We will have a, a small retail facility, but my experience when I had my own factory in Taylor, powered anybody's stuff.
Okay.
So we'll just have it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for bringing your business to the city of Westland, and I wanted to let you know that I, I did a little digging and checked you guys out a little bit, and you came highly referred in terms of running a very reputable business. So we look forward to having you here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, it's good to hear that.
Are there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck and thanks for bringing your businesses to Westland.
New business, item 11. Adoption of Prepared Resolution to Adopt the Michigan Local Agency Payment Warranty Program and Accompanying Documents in accordance to the requirements of MCL 247663.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any... Oh, we need a roll call on this one. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item 12. Adoption of Resolution to Implement Michigan Local Agency Payment Warranty Program.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item 13. Nomination of Delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference to be held September 25 through September 27, 2019 in Detroit, Michigan.
Open this up for nominations.
I'm going to nominate Council President Godbout.
Are there any other nominations? Any other? Motion to close nominations, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Councilwoman Green.
Dissent. And, and, and the reason for my dissent is because you have been on City Council for 19 years. I've been on council for a year and a half, and I have seen intentional efforts to keep certain council members from participating at various conferences and different political functions, me being one of them, you being directly involved on occasion. And I think that with there being several newer council people on council, that these opportunities should be opened up to people who can take advantage of the education and opportunities that comes along with this versus there being a continuation of certain people giving these opportunities. So I am not going to vote in favor of it. I'm sure it will pass, but I, I am not in favor of that. There is a lot of, for lack of a better term, new blood on the council, and it should not be the same people attending these events in the exact same positions on an ongoing basis. So I am not in favor. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Just refreshed my memory. I think we just passed a travel policy. I could be missing something. I think Councilwoman Green can go to this event. We're just nominating people to vote on the city's behalf. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct my memory? Okay, so there's nothing saying she can't go?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Councilman Hart. Yeah, I just wanted to explain my nomination. This, this one is a Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting. It's not like any of the other conferences you would hear about. President Godbout's gone for several years. They're going to be voting on the election of trustees, going over their policies, all kinds of stuff that he's in tune with. I think sending anybody else from Westland, we'd be kind of starting from scratch, whereas if he goes, he can kind of go there and be a leader amongst the MML, and that's, that's why I nominated him.
This is on the, the vote to close nominations, correct?
Yes.
No, this is dissent.
Yes, no, this, this vote, yes. Your dissent is for closing the nominations. This is not the vote for the delegation. This was purely on the nominations standpoint. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you for that clarification. And just to speak to what council, what Councilman Hersberg just stated relative to there being an increased possibility of leadership, we were all elected because we are leaders in our own right. So I don't think the longevity of a member who has attended a conference in the exact same capacity qualifies them any more than any of the other six of us who have been elected as leaders of this city. And I frankly would like to see other people in, in these seats versus long-term members continually getting these, these opportunities. So I will vote against it. Thank you.
I have a roll call vote to close nominations.
Councilwoman Green.
Close nominations?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item 14. Designation of Delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference to be held September 25 through September 27, 2019 in Detroit, Michigan. Council President Godbout has been nominated.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, is there support? Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 15. Nomination of Alternate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference to be held September 25 through September 27, 2019 in Detroit, Michigan.
Open this for nominations.
I'd like to nominate the Council President, Lieutenant, Peter Hersberg.
Are there any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
This is motion to close, is there support? Motion to close.
Support.
Motion to close. Support. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
No.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 16. Designation of Alternate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference to be held September 25 through September 27, 2019 in Detroit, Michigan. Councilman Hersberg has been nominated.
Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support? Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
No.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 17. Approval of Voucher.
Is there a motion?
Motion by Councilman Hart, is there support?
Support by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left?
Hi. A lot of you know who I am from my email, but I'm Denise Sedman, and I live on Raven Crest in Westland, Michigan. And the reason I came here is I have a statement to make and then I have a question. The statement I have to make is I put in a, an email to the mayor, and I had specifically asked him about the issue of reimbursement and cost for the use of the city facilities, and I have not received a response. And I sent that email, which I will read, and I hope that I can get an answer to that question today. I know this is... Let me read it, and then I have something to say, and then I will hopefully somebody on the council or the mayor will answer it. It says, "Dear Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to invoice Councilman Godbout the balance due from what he was charged and what he was supposed to pay for the rental of the City Hall? I'm sure it was a clerical error. I have been watching this issue play out, and at the last meeting, Councilman Hurd said he wants to resolve this issue. That is why I am copying him. I checked with Councilman Godbout, and he emailed me and said he would pay any balance if invoiced. It would be great to resolve this issue, especially before voting time. Thank you." So I know there was discussion about other people had rented the place, they owe money. I'm not talking about other people. I'm only talking about the one rental use. And the two questions are, number one, as mayor, do you have the capacity to invoice Mr. Godbout for published rates that you may have? And number two, does the council have the right to set a motion to say we would like to have Mr. Godbout invoiced for the published amount for the rental due? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor, did you want to respond?
Good evening, Mrs. Sedman. Thank you for coming outside. And I did get your email. I've been considering how I was going to answer you, so I'm glad that you're here tonight. I know it's something that you're passionate about, and I know that you're passionate about our community, and you've demonstrated that in the past, so I appreciate that. So we've had a lot of changeover in our Parks and Recreation Department. The rentals of City Hall property and all of our parks, that goes through the Parks and Recreation Department. It doesn't go through the mayor's office. The city council sets the rates. I don't get involved on a day-to-day basis as to what our people are quoting different people. So I can tell you that I have taken a look at it. City council's deliberated it in open session several times, and this is what we're going to do. First of all, like I said, I don't know who put the quote together for Mr. Godbout. We've had a lot of change in the Parks and Recreation Department. I couldn't tell you which part of the buildings are used, and that goes for other people that use the different, you know, the buildings for their events as well. But this is what we're going to do moving forward. City council's all agreed. You've heard them all in the open meetings say that they approve the rates. Those will be the rates that'll be quoted to them if they use the building. And then what I'm going to suggest is that if city council or other people want to use the city buildings or other portions of the city in times that are not available free to them as it is, I'm going to suggest if they come to city council and ask the council to waive the fees. And that's what we'll do moving forward with everybody. So I can tell you that if we use the building on, let's just say, a Saturday when we're not here, the city does incur some cost. So if we just say we're going to waive all the cost, then that will have a negative effect on the city. There are times where City Hall is available during business hours where we can accommodate people, and at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do, is accommodate as many people as we can. But moving forward, that will be what the administration will say to people, that if you don't like the rates that were adopted by the city council, or you'd like to do an event, and you think that the fees should be waived, that we're going to ask them to come to the city council, and if the council wants to waive those fees, that'll be their prerogative. So...
Okay, thanks. And so then, the past history of whatever happened, we're going to let sleeping dogs lie on that one and just go forward?
Well, you've only chosen one individual, and I'm not sure...
And that's the one I want to focus on, only just for an example. Are we going to go back to any of them?
Mrs. Sedman, you're extending your time.
I'm over my minutes. Okay. All right, thanks.
That's all right. I'll let the mayor respond.
Yeah, and I've tried to be clear, and I talked about it at the last meeting, but moving forward, that's what we're going to do. But as far as going back and trying to figure out who quoted what, and that's just, I'm not sure that it's time well spent. Would rather...
I'm fine with that, but I just wanted this issue closed, if it's going to be closed.
Okay.
Because it's bugging me that it keeps coming up, so let's close it.
Well, I'm not going to debate you why it keeps coming up. I'm sure there's reasons for that. But at the end of the day, moving forward, we've talked about it as a staff, we talked about it with our union employees, and that's how we'll handle it moving forward.
Right, yeah. And the Parks and Rec Director gave a presentation too about that, about fees for his part two today.
And he's been part of all these discussions, so I think he gets a pretty good handle of it.
Yeah, I do too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Annie, and I'm coming before the city council to ask them to implement a no barbecuing in the front yard, on the porch, or the side of the house. And the reason why I'm asking that is because the front of the house is the interest, which is the appearance, the first impression of the community. It prevents accidental residential fires, prevent injuries, keep communities clean, and it's unsafe. Grills, most of the time, are left unattended while making the fire, and the flames go up, and it could go in the trees. In my area where I live, there's lots of trees, and someone was barbecuing, left the fire, and the fire just blazed up. And the grills can tip over. The grills are kept on the porch afterwards, which causes blight. Some are too close to the sidewalk. Kids are trying to ride the bikes. There are new kids riding the bikes, and you know how they can't get steady, so they're going all up in the yard. So you're at the end of the sidewalk, and that child can, you know, can injure themselves. And in my survey that I did, when I asked people why did they barbecue in the front, and they said, "Because their backyard is not clean." So they're not keeping their backyard up, they're keeping the front up because they know that the city's going to come around and check the front. So that's why they're not using the backyard. And generally, once neighbors have fires in the neighborhood, most times, not all the time, the houses are not fixed, and once again, that causes blight. We want to be proactive, preventing something from happening rather than reacting to a situation that could have been avoided. According to the National Fire Protection Association, nationally, fire departments respond to an average of 7,700 house fires each year involving grills, sabbaches, and barbecue. Also periodically, communities across Michigan adopt newer versions of fire codes to meet the needs of the community. In 2017, Detroit changed their ordinance, not allowing barbecuing in the front. They are taking a proactive stand. I hope we will do the same in the city of Westland.
Thank you. Just a minute. Councilwoman Green?
Yes, thank you for coming to the council meeting, Ms. Heister, and sharing your concern. And you emailed me about this topic... Oh, well, not email. You and I had a discussion maybe a couple weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, and I emailed the entire council and the head of ordinance on your behalf to learn if there was any ordinance in the city of Westland that prohibited it. And after speaking with the head of our Neighborhood Services Director, we currently don't have an ordinance, but the entire council was asked to weigh in on this matter. I was just curious, had you heard back from any of those councilmen? Because they never responded to the request when I allowed them to... I educated them on the fact that there was a resident who wanted to get the perspective of city council.
No, after I went back, I didn't go back and check. I don't think I heard from anyone. Did I?
So I would just ask the other council members, as elected officials. We've been elected to stand for the interests of the community. This is the second resident tonight who's saying that she... They've sent emails, and we have not responded. So I think it is unprofessional to at least not respond and say, "I'm aware of it. I might need a little bit more time, but I'll get back to you." So now that you've made it to the council meeting, I would ask that the councilmen weigh in and offer you their perspective, because I did send that email twice, and I was not updated as well. And we've been elected to serve the community. So thank you for sharing that.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it to their attention, because I thought there was an ordinance, and I thought it was an ordinance because I wasn't seeing people barbecuing in the front. Then all of a sudden, people started barbecuing in the front, and I'm like, okay, and on the porch, and I'm like, okay, there must be an ordinance. And then I found out that there was not.
Well, with you saying that Detroit instituted a similar ordinance, it would be easy for us to at least research, to see if it's feasible, something that we could feasibly do here in the city of Westland. So at the very least, we should respond to you as a tax-paying resident.
At least, you know, I want somebody to take a look at it and give me a, you know, give me a response, because it is a concern, and it does cause blight. A lot of times, people leave their bags, you know, in the front, the grills are in the front, everything that they've done is still in the front, which is causing blight. And we have enough problems and issues with blight as it is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Hurd?
I haven't tried to... So the citizens can get their comments or apply in my comment.
Councilman Londo?
I'll just say briefly, I never got an email from you directly. I saw her email, Councilwoman Green's email, and our Neighborhood Services Director's email. Thought it was more of an FYI, not us to weigh in and make an ordinance through email. That's a violation of the Open Meetings Act anyway, so if you reach out to me, I'll respond to you anytime, so please do.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes.
Can't let two thank yous go by. I'd like to thank Tony, hopefully I'm saying his name right, C-L-I-S-H, Cliché.
Cliché.
Is that right?
Yes.
All right. DPS, for bringing over the loan of two of the manhole covers, the city of Westland Water Department, and a Nankin Township cover, which we haven't done yet. And the other one, in fact, they put them on a picnic table, so it's easier for printing, as opposed to the Eloise Hospital over at the Eloise Grounds, which is still down in the ground, so you can visualize what fun that was. So thank you, Tony. And I have to thank two guys, Jonathan Hayes, historical commissioner, and David Carrick, society member, for putting in around, between the two of them, on two different Saturdays, around 22 hours of cleaning at the Historical Park. They did a couple of things that they did do was power washing. Last Saturday, the museum was closed because of the activity going on at Central City. Power washing, and then I think the Saturday before, they cleaned inside and out the Katy Chicken Coop, and they did a lot of other cleaning. So thank you, you two guys, Jonathan and David. Thank you. And, still, I want... Reiterate $20, t-shirts, Colin's House at the Historical Park. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nina Ostrowski, and I just wanted to make a comment on this Montana restaurant. I agree with the both of you over here, saying that it's the location that I'm really concerned about. And then the man that was just talking about the ice machine, I was wondering, maybe they can switch locations? Montana can be the ice machine, and where that, you know, it's just a thought, just a thought. And then I also wanted to know, is anything being done about the recycling?
I think the mayor will probably have an update when he gives his comments.
Okay.
The mayor?
Oh, okay.
You get it? Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone on my left?
My name is Debbie Bennett, and I'm almost a 20-year resident in Westland, and I just want to mention a couple of things. The first is, Mr. Mulligan had mentioned that the City Hall is looking for more companies to come in and invest in the city. And there's a wonderful organization called the Fourth Wall Theater Group, and they started in Livonia, and now they're pretty much all over southeast Michigan. They provide theater opportunity for, I would say, ages eight through 30, and they're for children of all abilities, but primarily for children that have cognitive issues. And my daughter has been an instructor with them for about six years now, and they're just an amazing organization. And so what I'll do is, I'll make sure Mr. Mulligan has their information, so we can reach out to them. And children, or the families pay a fee, and usually, let's say they meet on a Monday, they could meet on a Monday from like 6:00 to 7:00 in the evening, and they'll have a six-to-eight week program. And then the last week is a theater production of the kids that they've put together with the staff instruction from Fourth Wall, and their parents are invited. And I've gone to several of those, and watching these parents see their kids on the stage doing something really special, it helps their communication skills, it helps a variety of opportunity for them to connect with other people that also have cognitive issues. And the Canton City also provides this service. I think they do a Fourth Wall Theater Group a couple of times a year, and a few of those times, they've actually been at the Cherry Hill Village Theater. So these parents, where their kids are a lot of times in the shadows, they're really able to come out and really express themselves, and it's a wonderful opportunity. So I'll get ahold of Mr. Mulligan. The other is about the repurposing of the Montana restaurant. And I can totally understand that. I know all of you, you care deeply about it. It's very evident that you all do, and I know that the people who voted know it's only because of a location issue, totally. So hopefully, we can have more opportunity for more of these to come into the city, as the mayor mentioned. I only mentioned my brother-in-law. My brother-in-law was one of the hardest-working, amazing men I've ever known in my life. When he was 41, he had back surgery and was addicted to opioids. And when he was 44 years old, he and my sister had some significant issues with the business they were running, and he took my sister to court. My sister told the judge, "If I could only find a place that would be inpatient instead of him going somewhere, coming out, going in, going out, and then finding all the drugs that he needed in between." And the night that they finished, and the judge said, "No," you know, there was other things going on, but he took an overdose accidentally, and he died. And so I'm looking forward to having this opportunity for, hopefully, a lot of people in Westland who have been dealing with us, to have this opportunity to get good treatment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thanks for that today, that more, because I agree, you don't want to make that place look like an institution. I took notes on it. It's like a treatment center. You don't want to post that word up there. You don't want to get too stigmatized in here. But I agree, should not be in that location, because you have a lot of traffic out there. And I'm concerned someone getting hit by a car. And there's a school, and there's, you know, I can understand all that. You have other vacancies out there, but you also should have a hearing, where people have concerns, where they... How they feel about it and stuff like that. That's important, get their voices heard about it, too. I don't know if it's a... I thought it was a mental health. I don't know, but I learned more about it today, to understand about it. That's really, that drug addiction is not good. So if they decide to come in like that again, they should listen, and hopefully, just pick a different location. That is a bad... That's a bad spot. I do agree. Anyway, my birthday is arriving in a couple weeks. I can't believe it, but I'll be up here talking by then. But I did a presentation at State Farm, and went well about mental health, because you know what? Sometimes people told me, "Mental health does affect their family." They want to learn more about it. So when they heard my presentation, they said, "Awesome, Ray. Keep going out there and do these groups. It's really important." Which I am. I'm reaching out to people out there. So with the disability concern board, too, I want, you know, that type of stuff, like treatments and stuff, we should be notified about that, too, because it helps us out. We should have our inputs on it. I want to say, "Thank you."
Anyone on my left?
Dan Statchow, City of Westland. Just wanted to tell everybody, we had a great time with Blues Blues and Barbecue. Everybody that was involved in it did a hell of a job, pardon the language. Ran into a lot of people from various communities, Northville, Novi, Ann Arbor, Chelsea. They said they wish they had something like that going here, and they'll be coming back every year. Just wanted to say, "Thank you."
Anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
My name's Michael Delf, and I was at the Blues Blues Barbecue and Ribs. Delicious. I had to try these four other vendors. Went a little bit broke, but it was worth it. I do have concerns about the opioid facility. I believe it is a bad site. In the future, I hope you all consider a better site. I'm glad that they are putting up a better fence, but there's too many kids. It's just a bad site. The other concern I had was the 2017 sidewalk incident. Since then, have we put in a safety sidewalk program? To what we...
The city attorney will answer. Do you want to do it now?
During my comments.
During your comments? Okay.
Because there's a lot of kids, a lot of seniors, and this shouldn't happen. I know other municipals, they do sidewalk programs. Take care of them. And also, the equipment for DPS, it's about time. That was over. And also, the equipment for DPS, it's about time, that was overdue. I've seen their equipment, they need new equipment. And that's it. Thank you. God bless.
Anyone on my left? Go ahead.
Good evening, council. I just had a quick question. I attended this afternoon's study session, Study Session Four, on the recreational marijuana ordinances, and how they were going to impact the City of Westland. And I'm just curious, when we wrapped up the meeting, it didn't have the date for the next study session, so if I could have that information, I'd appreciate it.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left?
Good afternoon, council, Delano Hornbuckle here. I just wanted to bring the attention to everybody to come out to the golf course, August 23rd, August 23rd, for the rename of the golf course, it'll be at 1:00, and that's a Friday. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda, and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
All right, thank you, City Council. Thank you, residents. Just a few things that came out of the audience, before I jump into my comments. Ma'am, you brought forward the question about, can the city create an ordinance to regulate barbecues in her front yard? Will you, this is my deputy here, can you give us your contact information? And what we'll do is, and we'll copy council on this, but we'll have the city planner take a look at how the city of Detroit did that, and we'll share that with the city council, and we'll see if it's something that fits here in Westland, too. So, if you give us your contact information, we'll make sure you're included on that. The question that came up about recycling, all right, I appreciate you asking that question. So the Finance Department, working with the city attorney and our trash hauler, has been negotiating with the recycling center on a new contract, so I hope to have that in front of city council here shortly. It's been a lengthy process, working with the recycling, because it's, the recycling center is actually a very small portion of a large national company's, it's owned by Republic, and it's a very small thing, so it's not, while it's a big thing to us, it's not necessarily the most important thing to them. So we've been struggling to try to get something that we can bring to council, but we expect to have that soon. So, thank you for asking about that. The question came up about, does the city have a sidewalk replacement program? So, we're handling this a couple of different ways. While we currently don't have a program in place like some other communities have, and Westland used to do this, it's been several years, but they had, every year, they brought in an engineer, and they went through different section of the city, and they marked up all the sidewalks, and they told all the residents that you need to replace these two, three, four, five squares in front of your house. The city quit doing that way a while ago, and it's probably, looking back, wasn't a good decision, and it was, this goes back probably more than a decade. But what we have been doing since then is, currently, through our neighborhood makeover program, we're going through, street by street, city by, you know, each neighborhood by neighborhood, we're identifying all street, all sidewalk blocks that are currently not compliant. So we're kind of going through, it's an emergency situation, and there's a, the city attorney can tell you what the state law is on that, but basically, what we're doing is, we're, through our neighborhood makeover program, we're replacing a lot of those dangerous sidewalks. And a lot of times, what you see is that, while the neighborhood makeover program goes through your neighborhood, they may not actually, when they're finished, they may not actually be replacing those sidewalks, but what they're doing is they're collecting the data, so what you'll see is typically, in the spring and in the fall, the cement companies start to do small projects. So while we may have already came through your neighborhood, we've identified those, it might be later in the year before you actually start to see some of those replaced. But what we're also doing, too, is on every house that sells in the City of Westland, as part of the city certification program, the inspectors are checking out the sidewalks in front of each one of those houses, so if there's a house that has a dangerous sidewalk, it's being, through the city's certification process, the seller has to fix those sidewalks before they sell it, and that's been helpful. And we're also continuing that through our rental inspection program, so every time a rental unit is up for inspection, we're checking out those sidewalks. Then the last time is every time one of these businesses come before the city council, I'm not saying this guy had to, but tonight, there was a gas station that was redeveloping on Cherry Hill and Henry Ruff. The planning department will go through with the building department, and we'll check out all the sidewalks there, too. So we're slowly chipping away at them, and then, if you remember, at the last couple council meetings, we've talked about some grants that we've got to fix sidewalks near schools. So we're hitting it in a lot of different ways. What we haven't done is, we haven't just flat-out said, "We're going through every sidewalk in the city, and we're going to make the, we're going to make the residents responsible for fixing them." There's other communities that have done that. If that's something that the council wants to look at, we can take a look at it, but that's, it's a very unpopular way to do it. Just a couple other things, tonight on city council, I appreciate council, we moved a lot of equipment purchases through tonight, and it may look like the city's buying a lot of stuff tonight. These were all purchases that were budgeted. The DPS department's done a good job of compiling all the paperwork, because a lot of this equipment is specialty stuff, so they tried to get it ordered, so that, you know, some of this stuff, we're going to try to use when the snow flies. So, tonight, while they approved the purchases, a lot of this stuff has, you know, there's a, not all this stuff's going to show up here tomorrow, so I appreciate council working with us on that. It's a lengthy process, and fortunately, we're in a position that we can upgrade some of our frontline equipment. I thought it was pretty cool, tonight, to see the folks from US Ice and American Tahini here, that's, you know, they're going to be occupying the former Dick's Sporting Goods building on the backside of the mall. And you're continuing to see us repurpose these buildings with more sustainable uses, as, you know, retail starts to, the face of that starts to change. So, you know, tonight, we saw the repurpose of that building, we saw the repurpose of the long vacant Montana's building, and we saw the gas station at Cherry Hill and Henry Ruff reinvest in theirselves. So there's a lot of good things happening, council, you're going to be excited at the next council meeting. We're going to have a major automotive Tier One supplier in, that's going to be expanding their operations, bringing a lot of new jobs to the city with their existing facilities, so that'll be a good thing. Dan Stack, I'll thank you for your kind words about Blues Brews and Barbecue, and, you know, every year, we like to try to say, "This was our best one yet," but this one's really going to be tough to beat. It's, when you have great food, and great music, and cold beer, and Mother Nature cooperates, it just brought it all together. So, this was our ninth annual Blues Brews and Barbecue, so, you know, I think it's pretty neat that next year, we'll be celebrating our 10th. On August 22nd, there'll be a free event for families, for kids, and the Blues Brews and Barbecue, while there were a lot of kids there, my kids were there to watch the fireworks, it's more geared towards a mature audience, but on August 22nd, at Tatten Park, we'll be doing a free outdoor movie night. The Spray Park will be open up, it's free of charge, there's going to be free food. This is an event that's sponsored by a private company called Park It, and they'll be out there that night, this'll be about the fifth or sixth year that we've done it in Westland. The movie is going to start, I believe, right about 8:00, and it's Ralph Wrecked the Internet, so hopefully, that's something that you'll want to see and bring the kids out, too. Council President, thank you for taking a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting, to honor the victims and the families that suffered this, over the weekend, in El Paso and Dayton, and I really appreciate the fact you did that. The last two things are, hopefully, you've noticed the new streetlights going up and down Warren Road, they're black in color, they're decorative. It's hard to believe, after all these years in our city, that we didn't have streetlights around the mall, so it's something that's going to be much needed. What you're going to like about these poles is that they give us the ability to put decorations on them, so they have plugs on them, so we'll be able to start decorating those poles in the Shop and Dine District, and we also can hang banners on them, so I think we can really go a long way toward continuing to brand that area. And with that, council, I appreciate, tonight, you had your fourth study session, as the city deliberates medical marijuana in the city, and for residents that weren't here, on thecityofwestland.com, we have every, everything, we're trying to be as transparent on this process as possible. You can click on thecityofwestland.com, right on the homepage, under the Medical Marijuana Ordinance flyer that's on the front, and you can see everything that's happened at the four study sessions, everything that the city council is looking at, the maps, and the different presentations and stuff, so, and I know myself and the city council would appreciate any input you have, as we deliberate that. Thank you.
Anything from the city attorney's office?
Yes, just a couple of things. First, I think the mayor covered the sidewalk issue, so I won't have to step back into that. With respect to the question on when the next study session might be, Study Session Five, for the issue of the marijuana ordinance here in the city, I've made the suggestion to council president that it'd be on Monday, August 19th, I think it was actually on a slide, I don't know that we covered the last slide or not, earlier this evening, but that's the proposal, and I'll have further discussions with the council president about that.
Begin council comments with Councilwoman Green.
Yes, I'd like to start by thanking the gentleman who came out tonight to share the story of your daughter's passing. I appreciate you being very transparent, and I'm sure it'll help many others in our community who need the help and could avoid a tragedy, but thank you so much for coming out and sharing. I'd also like to inform the public that there is a book sale coming up in September at our Westland Public Library. It's going to begin on Thursday, September the 12th, which is the preview sale, it'll be from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 12th. On Friday and Saturday, September the 13th, it is going to run from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And on Sunday, September 15th, it will run from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, which will be the bag day for $4 on that Sunday, and that is, again, at the Westland Public Library. I wanted to also advise residents of a free event coming up that is sponsored by Wayne County, which is our county, and it's sort of a back-to-school, mixed with census education, so I'll just read the information. It is going to be on Saturday, August the 17th, so that is next Saturday. It's a festival given by Wayne County, starting at 12:00 PM, and it's going to run until 10:00 at night. So if you're looking for a fun event for all ages, that offers free food, lots of freebies, games, live music, education, and education, the Wayne County 2020 Census Festival is just what you're looking for. On Saturday, August, September 17th, Wayne County starts the county-wide kickoff in Inkster, Michigan. In addition to carnival rides and pony rides, this festival will offer free backpacks for all youth, live musical performances, and more. This event is especially open to Westland residents, and it will run from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, 12, yes, 12:00 noon to 10:00 PM. In addition, Smart Bus will provide free transportation to up to 100 Westland residents who are in need of transportation to and from this event. So again, Saturday, August 17th, that's next Saturday, and the festival will take place on Inkster Road, between Michigan Avenue and Avondale. Also, if any residents would like to contact me, you can reach me directly at area code 734-828-7010, again, 734-828-7010. Also, you can find me on the Facebook page, Councilwoman Tasha Green. I have some very interesting topics going on, on that Facebook page, relative to all things Westland, so once again, please check that page out, I'd love to hear from you. And then just finally, in reference to Mrs. Seidman's question, thank you for coming in. I know I've talked to you on social media a couple of times, so it's so nice to finally see you, or meet you in public, but I wanted to speak quickly, relative to the concern of Ms. Heister. And just to clarify, for transportation's sake, the email that I sent to the city council regarding your concern on barbecue pits was sent on July the 17th, which was a Wednesday. I sent it to the head of the ordinance department, along with all council, and Michael Reddy, our mayor pro tem, who is the supervisor of all directors in the city. And I clarified in that email, on Wednesday, to city council, that you, Ms. Heister, wanted to know if council would be willing to implement an ordinance, if none exists, allowing for barbecue grilling in the backyards only. And I noted that you stated that you felt it was blight, and I gave them a very detailed description of the ongoing problem, and the fact that you'd reached out to the police, and the feedback that you got, but I will not read that for the sake of time, but I will say that Hassan Saab, the head of the ordinance department, did respond to me on Saturday, July 7th, excuse me, July 20th. I sent the original email on Wednesday, he responded on Saturday. I thanked him, and again, sent a follow-up to city council in bold, stating, "She would like to know your thoughts. I'm happy to pass them along, if preferred. I have encouraged her to bring her concerns to a city council meeting, if she does not receive a response." So, with Councilman Londo stating that it would be an Open Meetings Act, it would not be an Open Meetings Act if one of them could have individually responded to that request. They could have, if, just hit reply, as long as it didn't go to everybody else, it was no Open Meetings Act, they could have asked for your contact information, and it is now August the 5th. So I just wanted to clarify that my, the information that I passed along was, it basically was ignored. But I will encourage residents, if you are finding that your concerns are being ignored by any of us, I encourage you to come to city council meetings, because at the city council meetings, you will absolutely get a response. It should not take for you to come to a city council meeting to receive a response, but in the event that you are being, you cannot reach us, or you have not received a response, I would encourage you to come to the city council meetings, and I guarantee you, you will get, if not the result you're looking for, you will at least be acknowledged. And with that, thank you, and I'll see you in two weeks.
Councilman Hammonds. Councilman Hart?
Thank you, council president. Three things on my discussion agenda today, maybe fourth, we'll see how I get through them. First one, the opioid clinic, it was a very, very difficult decision that I had to make. Sir, I really appreciate you coming in here and telling your story, and I'm not blowing smoke up your skirt, you buried your heart, and I'll bury a little bit of my soul, too. My mother and my grandmother are both not here because of substance abuse. I lost my grandmother after she lost her leg years ago, and they didn't know how to treat shadow pains, so they just kept dumping painkillers in her, trying to numb it. It took her out. And then I lost my mother 12-years ago, on July 25th, of substance abuse, as well. And then recently, my family lost a cousin. So it does touch me. So, I was a no vote, because I just said I didn't want that spot, but I'm here to tell you, we need them, they need to occur, we need to have them in the community. Okay? But, this council voted 5 to 2, and now that the decision's done, I stand behind that decision of this council, and I'm going to work together with this council and all of our administration, to make sure that facility can be as good as it can be. I made my voice heard when I started, but it is what it is, we move forward, and that's what professionals do, we get behind it. But I wanted you to know, I feel a bit of your pain, but nothing like the loss of a daughter, so you have my sympathies. Secondly, with this discussion, Ms. Heister, is that your name? Okay, you'll be surprised to know that, today, I just learned your name. Okay? The only thing I knew about you up until today was, you lived on Powers Street. She told a little bit of the true story, she said on the 17th, she did send that email, and she said, "If you want to talk to this resident, you can get through me." Well, I don't think that's appropriate, eh? I don't need a broker for information. If you want my opinion, I'm happy to give it to you, but we didn't even have your email address or your phone number. Okay? So, and there's also a thing, and it was also asked, and I've got the email right here, "City council, if you want anything, you'd be sure to ask me, and let me know, and I'll tell her." Well, that's an Open Meetings Act violation, see, we can't discuss, as a council, in the groups of four or more, anything that would be a legislative action. That was actually something we were taught at the Michigan Municipal League, Electoral Officers Training, which we had people there with us, and my colleague was there as well. So the memory might be a little short on that one. So the memory might be a little short on that one. Now, I'm happy to tell you how I feel about the barbecue thing. Now that you're here, and we're in an open session, we can discuss it. I always worry about the impact it might have on somebody else when we talk about this very large and overreaching opportunity for an ordinance. If it's one person doing one thing causing a problem, I think there's ways that we can handle that under other ordinances, like a nuisance ordinance or something else, and we can talk sound about that. But if we go around and say, "No barbecue grills in the front yard or the side yard," I start to think about, well, there's some people who have lots that their front yard is this big and their side yard is this big, so now they can't barbecue in their side lot. Like, what about people who live on a corner? What is that saying? Now, how much can I see, how much can I not see? So I really worry not how that stops that one person from causing a problem, but how it impacts the other 80,000 people. So my advice and my response now is, I have concerns. I'm willing to look at something, but I want to hear what the fire chief has to tell me, his best practices, and hear what Hassan has to tell me and his best practices, and kind of give me some guidance so that I can think about it, too, and see how it would negatively affect other people. Because I barbecue in the backyard, but I'd hate to think if I had a big side yard, I wouldn't be able to run my smoker anymore, and it takes like 12 hours to run that thing, so I don't want to have to put up a fat. So thanks for bringing your issue up. I'm sure some other people had the issue before. It's been brought up now, we can talk about it. So we'll see if they come back, and I know the mayor said he was going to work on it. So I appreciate you, thank you. Third, Blues Brews Barbecue. Mayor, thank all of the administrative staff for all their hard work that they put in. I saw every single member of the administration, I think every single police officer was there, I think every single firefighter at some point was on duty there, and all of the volunteers. There's too many to list. It took a little bit more than a village to pull the Blues Brews Barbecue off this year, but everybody was out there working really hard, all the volunteer groups. It was a little warm at times, but it wasn't oppressive, and we managed to pull it off in a great fireworks show. I got nothing but a lot of positive reviews, again, from all of my guests from out of town. So thank you, great job. And again, thank all the administration, they worked really hard, putting in all that extra time, and it's a really fun event. With that, a little personal, I will see you in two weeks as well, after I visit Scotland. I'm going to visit with some elected officials in country. While I'm there, we're going to learn a couple things, and I won't be bringing a bill back to you. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Councilman Londo.
Thank you. Also want to thank Council President Gobel for the moment of silence tonight as well. And I'll just go through a couple quick things. I also have the email that Councilman Hart's referring to. I'll be happy to show this young lady in the back room soon as we're done, or if you give me your contact information, I can forward you over for the sake of transparency, so you can see that your contact information wasn't in there. And also, Mrs. Sedman came forward, I've also spoken with you, I responded to you. Friday, July 26th, it looks like, I responded to you. I even said, "I'm not sure if you're looking for a response from me, but I'm responding to you anyway." We went back and forth a little bit as well. So I have responded to residents. I have a policy. I try to respond within 24 hours if someone reaches out to me personally. In her case, I think I responded a couple days later. Again, I said, you know, I wasn't sure if this wasn't directed towards me, but still, I wanted to give you a response, anyway. A couple happy birthdays. Happy birthday to Deanna Statchow, who's in the audience. 21st birthday, right? And Ray in a few weeks as well. You're welcome. I also want to thank Parks and Rec Director, say that 10 times, Kyle Mulligan, for coming out and giving us an update, and our facilities director, Vic Barra, for giving us an update during a study session. Council knows, I sent an email to the administration and copied the council last week. I got some feedback from some residents on our park conditions that were very complimentary, and I echoed their comments as well. I've been out to a lot of the parks, walking four miles a day, trying to lose a little weight and stay in shape. And the golf course as well, the golf course looks tremendous, so I wanted to pass that information on, so thank you to Kyle for coming out. Last council meeting, I forgot to mention this, so I just want to blow through it real quick. The Mothers Against Drunk Driving of Michigan held its annual Lifesavers Award ceremony recently, and at that event, they recognized the Westland Police Department as one of the outstanding law enforcement agencies of 2018. This award was presented in recognition of the department's outstanding efforts in drunk and drug driving prevention, education, and enforcement. There's some keynotes in here, I'll just blow through a couple of them. The Westland Police Department made a total of 332 OWI IRS. Of those, 280 were alcohol-related and 52 were drug-related. The Westland Police Department is one of only two Wayne County police departments that has two nationally-recognized drug recognition experts. And then a couple more, but I'll just give the last one. They also have a dedicated OWI detail that's placed an officer on the road four nights a week to keep focused purely on drunk and drug driving. So thank you to the chief for keeping our streets safe. I also want to take a moment to praise the heroic efforts of both our police and fire departments last week. As many of you know, we lost an elderly gentleman to a fire, and an older woman is in the intensive care unit right now, and our police department was there on scene and pulled this woman from, they went into the home and pulled this woman out. It was on 2, 4, and 7. I'm sure most of you saw it. So I just wanted to first send my condolences to the family, the person that passed away, and to hope, you know, for a speedy recovery for the lady. And thank the men and women for their compassionate and heroic act of going in there and going after them. One more quick thing on that fire. I did have a chance to speak to the fire marshal, and I know he was quoted in The Observer. Before first responders arrived, the windows were already broken out. Person must have had, you know, probably had good intentions, but they broke out a lot of the windows, and for those that know about fires, that's when ventilation comes into play, when you start punching out windows, and that's right where the fire is going to start heading towards the ventilation, so. Also want to take a congratulations to the Westland Police Youth Academy graduates. I think I see one in the back room, back there. Right there, yeah. I believe, also want to thank the officers who participate in this academy. I know you all worked very hard on it, and had a chance to attend the ceremony. And I'm also partnering up with our community police officers to host a school supply drive. We're working out the details, but it sounds like we're going to do it just after Labor Day. I know school starts a little bit early this year, but we're going to do it September 7th at Target on Warren Road. We're going to call it Stuff a Squad Car. You can get more information on that on the Westland Police Community Partnership Facebook page, and we're hoping to have a drop-off location at the police department, which is open 24 hours for those that can't make it. I'll echo the comments of Blues Brews and Barbecue, it was incredible. I want to thank everybody that was involved in that, everyone that attended, all the volunteers. The feedback from the residents was great, so appreciate everybody's efforts on that. As the mayor said, it was possibly the best jet, and we're looking forward to our 10th year next year. We got to outdo that one. Also recently, Taylor Towers had a 40th anniversary celebration. I had a chance to attend, and we got to meet some of the current and former employees and all of our wonderful residents that live there, so I appreciate the invitation. I had a chance to talk to a lot of residents, and one of them said that this is the Westland's Ritz Carlton. And they couldn't say enough good things about the staff there, so I just want to say thank you for their kind words. And then closing, I just want to share just a quick sad moment. Today is the anniversary of my mother's passing in 2003. Lost her to cancer, so it's been 16 years, and it's been a rough day for me. I'm pretty talkative, I'm just trying to stay busy to keep my mind off it, but just, I know she's proud of me, and I just hope you guys can all keep her in your prayers. Thanks. Keep me in your prayers, I should say.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks. It's easy going at the end, everything's pretty much taken. I just want to mention that U.S. ICE and the Tahini production facility, I don't know if we went into full detail on that, but that's something council's been talking about for about a couple months now, and I've been excited about it since they brought it up. They're going to employ about 120 people over there, and that's going to be at the old Dick's Sporting Goods building. So that's going to be a huge improvement on that side of the mall. Mr. Delf mentioned the sidewalk safety program, and the mayor kind of filed up and talked about the neighborhood makeover program and certain things, but there's over 200 miles of road in the city, let alone sidewalks, so it's really hard to keep track of. I've been working with personally, trying to point things out in certain spots that aren't really up to code or ADA compliant. Just this past weekend, we got cleared the Wayne Road Bridge just south of Joy Road. So there's plenty of spots around town where there isn't really a property there that these processes we have at City Hall don't work, because there's just nobody there, but we are working on it to get a full citywide cleanup of the sidewalks. And if you notice anything personally, that's, you know, like a pipe sticking out of the ground or something that's no good, please put it in the Click and Fix app. And then at the Westland Historical Village Park, it's going to be open this Saturday, 1 to 4. I'm going to get there before everybody else to get one of those t-shirts for Westland. So, and also, there's an election tomorrow for neighborhoods north of Warren Road, if they're in Levonia Public School District. The clerk's going to have a long day, low voter turnout or not, there's still employees and all kinds of things going on. So best of luck to you tomorrow.
Still an election.
And the meeting's still going. You all set?
I'd like to start by thanking Malia DePoneo, the young lady from St. Matthews Lutheran School, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I, too, would like to extend my thanks and congratulations to the team that put together the Blues Brews and Barbecue. It was a great event. Mother Nature cooperated. The music was good, the food was good. Everything about the event was very good. I'd like to give a special thanks to Devon Adams, Craig Brown, Aubrey Berman, and Craig Welcomeback for the hard work in getting us there and getting us through it. Of course, as to the event, as was mentioned, DPS, DPS crews did a tremendous job over the, setting up, tearing down, and during the event. It was great, as well as our police department, fire department, all the directors that were there, our Parks and Rec Department, and the Park Rangers that Kyle talked about earlier. They did a, they did a great job. Some of the volunteer groups that helped out, and really, you can't put this kind of event on without the help of the volunteers. So I'd like to give a thanks to the Westland JECs, the Friends of the Library, Gateway Family Worship Center, the Inspire Theater, the Norwaine Boxing Gym, the Norwaine Community Citizens Council, the Westland Grange, St. John's Episcopal Church, the Westland Civitans, the Westland Dem Club, the Westland Lions Club, the Westland Rotary Club, the Westland Youth Assistance Program, and the Westland Youth Athletic Association, WYAA. All of those people had numerous volunteers out for both days of the festival, and it was a great event, and without their help, it wouldn't have been the success that it was. I'd like to thank my colleagues for, again, the appointment as the MML delegate. I would like to remind everyone that this Saturday, August 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., is the Household Hazardous Waste Collection up at Westland Mall. So it's posted on the website, some of the items. You can also go to the county website, which will give you a more detailed explanation as to what items are considered household hazardous waste that should be brought up and dropped off at that facility. And there's no need to even get out of your car. If you put the items in your trunk or in the back of your vehicle, open up your hatchback, someone will be there to take the items out and make sure that they get disposed of properly. In regards to, I agree on the sidewalk issues. One of the easiest things to do, if there is a sidewalk that you notice is bad, would be to go to the Westland Click and Fix app. We have an app available. You can take a picture of it, it geo-marks exactly where that is, and enters a work order ticket for DPS to come out and take a look at it and see what needs to be done to get it addressed. In regards, and again, to Ms. Heister, the notice did not include any contact information for you. It did ask a polling question on behalf, for the city council, and my colleague indicated that, well, we could just reply individually. Our council policies and procedures state that we have to reply all, and so the, asking a question about developing an ordinance or doing any official business for the city outside of an open meeting is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So be happy if you want to provide your information to get back with you on the barbecue issue. I, too, also have some concerns, because in the past, the neighborhood that I lived in and in several other neighborhoods throughout the city, people store their barbecue grill in their garage, and it's either on the side entry on their garage or in the front of their house from the garage. They open up the garage, they barbecue, and they put their grill back in the garage once it's cooled off, from that standpoint. So as one of my colleagues mentioned, we have to look at what the ordinance impact would be on more than just one neighborhood, but throughout the city. So I'm sure we'll take a look at it and get with our planning department and our ordinance department and see what needs to be done on that. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?